We now begin the City of Boynton Beach City Commissioners Meeting Thursday, September 7, 2017 at 6:31 PM. Would everyone please rise for the invocation by Pastor Robinson, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance?
Let's pray. Most gracious and eternal God, we are grateful and thankful for the opportunity to gather together. We are thankful for our city leadership. We thank you for allowing them to serve this community. We ask that you would please endow them with wisdom and knowledge and with the love for community as you have, so that we can continue to grow as a wonderful city. We ask a special blessing on those who have been affected by the recent storms, Harvey and Irma, and we pray that you will continue to protect our city and help our citizens to prepare for what is to come. We ask that you will keep us safe. Thank you for the City of Boynton Beach. Thank you that everybody here in this city belongs to you. We lift ourselves and we lift all the citizens up to you and our leadership. Thank you for your continued blessings. Thank you for what we will do in the future. In your name we pray. Amen.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Steven Grant.
Here.
Vice Mayor Justin Katz.
Here.
Commissioner Mac McCray, absent. Commissioner Christina Romulus.
Present.
And Commissioner Joe Casella.
Present.
Forum is present.
All right. May I have any additions, solutions, or corrections to the agenda? I just have one. I have an announcement of the CRA meeting for September 19th. May I have a motion to approve as amended?
(Inaudible).
All those in favor state so by saying aye. I know it's not on the agenda, but we normally have any information. Oh, that's on other. So first off, we will conduct a public hearing to adopt the final assessment resolution for the full year 2017 to 2018 fire assessment.
Mayor, Commissioners, Tim Howard, Assistant City Manager. You have a couple items in front of you, and just to make note for the public, there are copies of the agenda items for the fire assessment in the back, and copies of the budget agenda item, which is the next one, and copies of the budget PowerPoint presentation that will be, that I'll use. So if they'd like to get copies in the back on the table. So in July, the Commission passed a proposed fire assessment of $120 per residential unit, which is an increase from $88 last year and going up to $100 this year. What you have in front of you is a final resolution adopting the final fire assessment at that dollar amount. There's also, as in previous years, a hardship application that goes with that. Once it's approved tonight, we will, we have a translation company that will translate it into Spanish and Creole, and it'll be available on the website. We'll promote it through social media, through the city website. Hard copies will be available in the city hall, library, and various recreation centers. So with that, you're holding a public hearing to adopt the final assessment. I'm not sure if Jim reads the resolution. Okay.
Okay. Do I open up for a public comment because it is a public hearing, or do you need to do it at the second hearing?
This is the last hearing.
Okay, so I'm going to open up to public comment if anyone has any discussion on the fire assessment. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes. We're Bob and Jenny Foot. We reside at 760 East Ocean Avenue. And we're here tonight because we're in favor of the assessment. We've been reading about it, and we understand that half of the money collected on the additional monies coming in would be directed at filling the staff at this fire department. And it's been my understanding that one, one fire company covers for another one if they're out, so it seems to me that every fire station should be fully staffed. But we can tell you.
I had a stroke after I, you prepared the first assessment, and I appreciate the fire and rescue coming to get me.
I can tell you that the quick response in this city is heartfelt and warming. The night I had to call when Bob had his stroke, and while I'm on the phone still explaining what's going on, and I can hear the fire department on the way to our apartment building, I can't tell you how good a feeling that is. And the quick response, I think, is somewhat responsible for why Bob has recovered so, so well from this, too. So we are here in support, and, and I can understand that it can be a hardship, but I know that you have a plan to help people with that. And for the rest of us, I think we should be grateful to be paying it for the service that we get. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Steve Benfelt. I reside at 15 Cedar Circle, Boynton Beach, and I've lived here for 35 years. I remember when this assessment was first adopted in 2001 at $15 a year, and it's been going up steadily. It was supposed to be, I'm speaking out against it. It was supposed to be sunsetted in 2008. The fire, the new fire department building on High Ridge was built. That was supposed to be, come out of that money, as I understand it. And it's been renewed every year. I, I understand, you know, I truly appreciate the people that spoke before. We all want to have good service in our fire department, but these fees are, are adding up and up and up every year, and, and, you know, talking with my neighbors in my community, a lot of people are, are really tired of it. And I think that you'll find, if you examine it, and from what I've been reading in the paper, some of this money is supposed to be going towards the pensions of our firefighters, which I, I have a problem with that, too. That should be covered in the contract with the city, and, and, you know, that, that money should be set aside in a different manner. So as far as I'm concerned, I'm speaking out against it. Thank you.
Hi. Susan Oyer, 140 Southeast 27th Way. He brings up very good points. I'm really kind of anti-tax myself, except that I'm actually for this. I think we have a disproportionately large amount of people in this city who fall under some threshold where they don't pay anything, and I believe we all need some skin in the game, and 20 bucks isn't going to kill you. And if, you know, if it really is going to make that big of a difference, and we've all been there, where sometimes you are living paycheck to paycheck, then you do have a way to work around it with the poverty form that I saw in the back of the package. But I, I do really think we need to move forward with this. I mean, I hate the idea that this is a tax that should have ended. Maybe we should look at making an amendment to find some way to sunset this out, but I have no problems paying the extra 20 bucks, and I think we all should. We get outstanding service, I got to say. I love our fire department and our police department. I've never seen such fast response times in my life. They're just amazing, and I think this will go a long way in making our services better and giving us more of what we need, although I do agree with the prior gentleman, you know, I don't know that we should necessarily be dealing with the pension through this. This should be adding staff or doing building or, or equipment or whatever it is we need, but I, I don't want to put this towards the pension because that is a problem that needs to be resolved on its own, but I certainly think we need to be doing this. And like I said, everyone needs skin in the game, especially all these places, condos, houses, whatever, where they're not paying anything at all. And yet, they're the ones who are probably calling the most often, because I'm guessing it's the elderly communities, and, you know, I, we're all going to end up there someday, but we all need to make sure we're paying for the services we're taking advantage of. So thank you.
And if there's anyone else that would like to make a comment, please come and stand in line.
Good afternoon, everyone. Good evening. My name's Elaine Campbell, and I live at Boynton Lakes North. I live on a fixed income, and I have a lot of expenses. And I don't mind the $20, but I'm really against the pension. I really don't think that we should have to pay for it. You should find another source or have it budgeted ahead of time. Thank you.
Saying no more public comment, may I have a motion to approve the resolution? Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed?
No.
Motion passes three to one. Now we'll conduct the first public budget hearing for full year 2017-18, proposed millage and annual operating budget.
Mayor, we start with the resolution regarding the millage and then the resolution regarding the budget. I'm going to read both together.
Okay.
But each has to be voted on separately, with the millage resolution coming first. Resolution R. 17080, a resolution of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, adopting a proposed millage rate for the city's general operating fund for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2017, and ending September 30, 2018, announcing the percentage, if any, the proposed millage rate exceeds the rollback rate, announcing the date, time, and place for the second and final public hearing on the budget and millage rate, providing for severability, conflict, and an effective date. The proposed millage rate is 6.43% above the computed rollback rate, which is 7.4224. The second public hearing, second and final public hearing, will be held September 19, 2017, at 6:30 PM here in the Commission chambers. Resolution R. 17181, excuse me, 081, a resolution of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, adopting a tentative budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2017, and ending September 30, 2018, providing for severability, conflict, and an effective date. The second and final public hearing for the budget will be September 19, 2017, at 6:30 PM here in the Commission chambers.
Mayor, I have a brief PowerPoint presentation, if you want me to run through, that incorporates any changes that occurred since the July workshops, based on Commission action.
Yes, please.
So as you heard from Jim, the first resolution is the adoption of the millage at 7.9 mills, which is the same millage rate that we have the current year, so there's no increase in millage rate. The purpose of the workshop tonight is to go, adopt budgets for all the funds in the city, which total 203,832 is the general fund. Tonight, you'll do a first public hearing on the proposed millage rate and the tentative budget, the final hearing for the fire assessment, which you just did, September 19th. You'll do a second public budget hearing to adopt the final millage and the final budget for next year. This sheet is a little hard to read. You've got copies of the PowerPoint in front of you and copies in the back. What this shows is Commission action since the July workshop. The top line is the general fund budget that we had at the workshop, which was 83,347,977. This thing works. There you go. So since then, we reinstated the red light camera program, and with that, we are budgeting a special revenue fund called the Traffic Safety Fund that allows us to move three police personnel out of the general fund to the special revenue fund. That's 181,900. The CRA board, which you guys sit at also, approved increasing the neighborhood policing by one additional officer that the CRA would reimburse the city for. So the 75,000 is the additional one FTE to the police department to hire a police officer for the neighborhood policing. That's on the expense side. On the revenue side, we increased the ILA, which is interlocal agreement from the CRA, by that 75,000, so that was just an additional expense and additional revenue. The Commission also did not pass the ordinance that staff recommended to increase the sanitation rates by a dollar a month. The impact of that is the transfer from the sanitation fund to the general fund needed to be adjusted down by 400,000. The budgeting of the red light camera fund, when we budgeted the lease payments for the cameras, the estimated revenue coming in from the fines, the expenses for the personnel, estimated legal costs, magistrate costs, we are, were able to project $100,000 being transferred from the Traffic Safety Fund to the general fund, so that was an increase in a transfer by $100,000. With those changes put into the formula, we are going to budget 118,100 of fund balance to balance the budget. The proposed budget in July did not require a fund balance appropriation. Based on these actions that have occurred since then, we're recommending a fund balance appropriation of 118,100. So the revised general fund budget is 83,241,077 for next year.
If I, before you change that, in the past, when these red light cameras were running in the income, wasn't it far greater than 100,000, 118,000? Was it closer to 250,000, 300,000?
Right. But those years that we, that we had that.
Yeah.
The personnel for it was being charged in the general fund, so we, we, now we're moving 181,000 over to the, so it's paying for the personnel. So that's the 281.
We were paying those three individuals out of the general fund?
Yeah.
I thought they were coming out of the red light camera fund.
One year was in, out of the general, one year was out of the traffic fund. We went back and forth, a couple different ways, while we had this running.
So when they were in the traffic fund, this, the red light camera, they were getting paid out of that? How much was the profit margin there?
We didn't, I don't believe we transferred to the general fund because we, that particular year, we incurred legal expenses for the program, so we didn't actually do a transfer back to the general fund.
Okay. So would it be fair to say that the income that we're going to gather from these red light cameras is going to be greater than 100, 118,000? Would you say that's a fair assessment?
It's a fair assessment that the fines will cover the cost of the program, including a transfer of 100,000 to the general fund. Yeah.
Okay. So any other profits, can we transfer that back into the general fund also?
Yeah. It would probably, I would recommend it would be done the subsequent years, once we finalize out, because these, remember, these are all estimates for next year. So as we end the next fiscal year, if there's additional funds remaining, yes, we could transfer it back to the general fund.
Okay. My question, I was just trying to get to the point that in past years, we made X amount of dollars of profit on red light cameras, and I was just wondering if you could project that into, into this next year's budget?
That's what that 100,000 is.
And that's all you say, 100,000? And I'm saying that past years, it's been greater than 100,000.
If it could be, if it's more at the end, we can transfer it in.
Okay. Thank you.
Also, one of the other things is that our Traffic Safety Fund also transfers that fund, the, the income that we're, the revenues, to the state for their portion.
Right. We collect the total fine into the fund, and we remit back the state portion, and then we retain the city portion, and then we pay the expenses out of that city portion.
Okay. So it's, you know, the state gets more of the revenue than we do. Is that correct?
They get $83,000, and we get $75,000.
Okay. Thank you.
This slide just shows you the, we're, again, from the July workshop, the changes since then to now, is the changes in the general fund that I just went through. We didn't have a proposed budget for Traffic Safety Fund in July. We now do because of the red light camera. And we had to adjust the solid waste fund because of the decree not approving the increase in the garbage rates that we had brought forward. So this is, just gives you the revision of the budget amounts for these three funds. The detail of the traffic safety, if you want it, is in your agenda cover sheet, just broken out by line item as far as what the budget lines are.
Tim, once again, just to educate me, the red light camera fees and administration fees, 1,67,500?
Correct.
Mm-hmm. That's what it costs us to run that program?
No, that's the revenue coming in.
That's the revenue coming in from that program.
And then when you go down to the bottom part.
Bottom, that's the expenses to run.
1,67, yeah.
Okay.
And that 1,67,000 is broken out on your agenda cover sheet.
Right. Okay.
This slide is, lists all your funds that you're approving a budget for in the proposed resolution tonight, that totaled the 203,076,616. I already went through the changes that occurred. And stop me if you have a question.
Did you mention us adding the third officer to the?
Neighborhood policing.
Did you mention that?
Yeah.
I missed it? Okay. I'm sorry.
To the, to the police department and the increase of the ILA from the CRA. These are the pie charts that breaks out the funding sources for all the, uh-huh? Do you have a question, Commissioner? Okay. Funding sources for all the funds totaling the 203 million, the four major funds are utility fees, property taxes, capital and bond, and transfers between the funds. These are the expenditures for all the funds. General fund makes up 41% of the total city budget. Water and sewer utility fund makes up 46.5 million. Capital funds are 33 million. Solid waste is 10.6 million. And then the smaller funds are listed on the pie chart. The general fund by itself, millage rate 7.9 mills. These breaks out the different types of revenue, the property taxes, the fund transfers, intergovernmental. These are categories of revenues that we report to the state, how they require us to report. The fire assessment, franchise fees, licenses and permits, fines, and then the fund balance appropriation.
Tim, what percentage does the public safety, police, and fire, what percentage of that general fund does that take?
Let's see. Police is...
Total.
Can you see it?
28, okay, I see it small print. 36, 28?
Yep. 36 for police and 28 for fire.
Okay.
These are your departmental budgets per departments that we're proposing. Shows the current year adopted budget, the proposed budget for 1718, the change from one year to the next, and the percent of the change. We went through this in July. The totals, the current year budget, 79.4 million that you adopted. The proposed budget for next year is 83.2, an increase of 3.8 million, or 4.7%, I believe that is. This is the property tax rollback rate. Jim mentioned this in the resolution. 7.9 mills is the recommended millage rate. That's 6.43% increase over the rollback rate, which is 7.4224. This is the, what the ad will, we have to place an ad in the paper every year, and it'll say that the actual tax rate increases 6.43% per the state trim calculations over the rollback rate of 7.4224, but the tax rate itself of 7.9 will not increase from this year to next year. And you adopted the 7.9 in July.
So the headlines could read, Boynton increases taxes.
Correct.
Okay.
That's the end of the presentation. I can answer any questions you have, hopefully, as far as the changes that occurred since July, and if not, then it's the two resolutions that are in front of you to consider.
Seeing none, have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next resolution, adopt the tentative budget. May I have a motion to approve?
(Inaudible).
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Seeing none, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Tim. Moving on to informational items by members of the City Commission. I think we're all, have other things on our minds, so I'll be expeditious about this. I attended the Florida Legal Cities up in Orlando. It was a great conference, definitely learned a lot, and I'm very glad that we have it up on our agenda to go to Tallahassee, because I think there's a lot of work that needs to be done up there, and I'm sure Joe will maybe go up more than one time this year.
Hopefully.
Also, I spoke at the AEC Trend Setters Development Through the Eyes of Municipalities, and the big takeaway there is that, you know, all the projects that we have in Boynton Beach, we have over a billion dollars of investment going on, and so I think that we will be able to lower taxes next year because we'll have a lot more improvements on our property roll. And then in addition, I met with Bradley Miller and Art Dalmata regarding the villages of Boynton, and just want to make a comment about the upcoming storm. One of the things that you can do is take pictures and videos of everything that you have in your house and outside. If you do have any damage, it's going to be a valuable tool when you're dealing with your insurance company. So hope everyone is staying safe, has a place to be, and is prepared. Commissioner Romulus, would you like to go next?
Mayor, I will hold you to that taxes comment.
Yeah.
So be careful.
All right.
Good afternoon, everyone. Not too much to report. Again, I think everyone is kind of in the same headspace where we're all, want to kind of be elsewhere, so I will also make it short. I met with Francis and Arthur Dalmata of Villages, who will be presenting to us tonight. Very good meeting with that. And just one tip that I also have is, if you follow me on Facebook, I've been posting about different places that have water, or plywood, or different necessities for the hurricanes. So if you're, you know, trying to do some last minute arrangements, and you're looking for where we need to find these things, feel free to follow me on Facebook. I'll try to keep you updated. So that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Commissioner Casella?
Thank you. I met with Bradley Miller from Miller Planning, Land Planners, and the Dalmatas, and Mr. Miller promised me that he would be expeditiously quick tonight so I can get home and watch the New England Patriots kickoff game. So we're going to hold him to that. Also, I just, you know, this is going to be my first hurricane experience here, and I sit up here with a, you know, I won't say I'm scared, but a lot of anticipation. What, I have no idea what a hurricane is, or what the potential damage it can do, other than what I've seen on TV, which is quite scary in itself. So I pray for all of us to be safe and sound, and that this thing here spares us the brunt of its fury. So stay safe, everyone.
Vice Mayor? I also met with Bradley Miller and the Dalmatas regarding their project on the agenda tonight, and that's all. Moving on to announcements, we will have, schedule a CRA meeting prior to the City Commissioners Meeting on September 19th at 6:30 PM to adopt the Boynton Beach Community Redevelopment Agency's full year 2017 to 2018 annual budget. That's it. Moving on to administrative, item A. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Moving on to public audience. If anyone has a public comment that would like to speak, that is not on the agenda, please come down. You'll have three minutes to present. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Reverend Nathaniel Robinson III. I'm the pastor of Greater St. Paul African Methodist Episcopal Church on Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. Good evening again to the Commission and to everyone present. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm here tonight because there have been a string of homicides due to gun violence in the community surrounding the church where I serve. The members of our congregation, the members of our community, we, we just want this to stop. We want to do everything that we can to try to decrease the number, the gun violence, especially the number of homicides, but gun violence in general. And we also want to try to not only reduce, but to eliminate it. One of the things that we do know is that if people know that they're being watched, that there's a possibility that that can reduce gun violence. And so the, as the community that I serve, that I represent, I speak on their behalf in saying that we are all for some kind of surveillance. If the city can do that, that would be great. We do understand that there is, that there are statutes in the state of Florida that require convenience stores to have outside cameras that can help to identify people who commit crimes. We do know that there are special statutes that speak to places that have had thefts, murders, shootings, and so if there are any areas like that on our street, we are in support of those areas being under surveillance and posting big yellow signs. being under surveillance and posting big yellow signs that let people know that those areas are being watched in hopes that that will reduce gun violence and homicides. We also recommend or request that the city would look into programs like a ceasefire that have reduced gun violence in cities like Boston, Massachusetts by 63%, cities like Oakland, California, and other cities. The judicial, the justice system of the United States has said this is a great program. And so we request that you would look into that and see if we can use programs like that to help to reduce gun violence in our communities. These deaths and this gun violence is atrocious. It has to stop, and we're willing to partner with our city commission, with our local law enforcement, and whoever we can to bring it to an end. We applaud programs like Meant to Make It and the Boynton Beach Wildcast and others that are trying to get our next generation more committed to our city and develop a love and respect for our city. But this current generation, we can't do much for them, but we're working on the group that's coming behind. Thank you for...
Thank you.
...the time.
Hi, Susan Oyer, 140 Southeast 27th Way. First of all, I'd like to say I hope everyone is safe. Commissioner Casello, you picked one heck of a first one to have as your first because, you know, this is going to kick our butts in all honesty because I've lived through many, and this is nothing like I've ever lived through. I would suggest that people look into taking their solar lawn lights and sticking them in your backyard because, you know, people are going to steal them when they see that they light up. Unscrew the tops, bring them in, and then you have light in your house. Please don't use candles. Please don't use oil lamps. There's nothing worse than a fire during a hurricane, and the fire department's not coming out because, you know, the winds are blowing too high. So the little solar lights, and they're a buck forty at Target right now on the clearance rack. And they still had some when I was there a day ago. Also, I would suggest that you, at some point, if not this storm, some other storm, get a solar-powered cellphone charger. They also work on your tablets, and they sell them at Harbor Freight. So go check those out. They're like 15, 20 bucks. And please keep an eye on your neighbors and your neighborhood. I've already reported to the police this morning, there was a guy, I swear he's a fake AT&amp;T guy, walking around, no uniform, no ID, just like a fake US DOT number on the side of his truck on top of a different number. And he's walking through our neighborhood, Commissioner Romulus, with a, you know, piece of paper and a pen, just writing down who's left and who's staying so he knows which house to go break into. So this has already started, and thank you to our police because I hope I wasn't, I had to leave and go babysit. But I hope you guys responded and took care of that fake AT&amp;T guy walking through my neighborhood this morning. And I assume we're going to see several more, but keep an eye on your neighborhoods, people. And thank you. Thank you, Susan.
Seeing no more, moving on to administrative. First item is to authorize the City Commissioners to travel to Tallahassee, Florida to attend Palm Beach County Days 2018, January 9th to the 10th. May I have a motion to approve?
No motion.
Do I have a second? All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Seeing none. Motion passes.
Mayor, as we get closer, well, actually, I'll be speaking with you if, to see which of you want to go, and then we will be registering as soon as it opens because it gets, the hotels fill up fast.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right. There is no applications for our administrative boards. I will list the boards that are currently needing applicants. The Arts Commission, the Building Board of Adjustments and Appeals, the Employee Pension Board, the Library Board, the Senior Advisory Board. Next, we are on consent agenda. Is there any items that the commission wishes to pull? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve?
No motion.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Bids and purchases of over 100,000. Approve the purchase of water meters and equipment with census metering systems at the estimated annual expenditure of 175,000.
No motion.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Now we are on to public hearings. The first one we have, Propose Ordinance Number 17-022, first reading. Jim?
Ordinance 17-022. Is that right? It's 22?
Yes.
An ordinance of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida amending land development and regulations, Chapter 1, Article 2, definitions amending, Chapter 1, Article 8, Section 1D, appeals amending, Chapter 2, Article 4, Section 2, building permits amending, Chapter 2, Article 4, Section 4, variances amending, Chapter 4, Article 10, flood prevention requirements to update definitions, building division processes standards, and adopt flood insurance rate maps and flood insurance study in accordance with the NFIP requirements, providing for conflict severability, codification, and an effective date.
Good evening, Mayor, Commission. Andrew Mack, I'm pitching for Shane Kittendorf. He's actually out preparing for the storm. So I do have a presentation here. This is going to be a second reading, item that'll be on second reading. So I can either go through the presentation or just, if you have any questions, I can entertain them. It's up to you.
I'm okay with getting the presentation on second reading. My only question is, this is coordinated with the state and federal government?
Correct. All of our amendments have gone to the state. Actually, their consultant helped us draft some of the amendments. So they've all reviewed it, and this will make us a compliant ordinance.
Okay.
As well as adopt the new maps and study.
May I have a motion to approve?
Second.
May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Katz?
Yep.
Commissioner McCray absent. Commissioner Romulus?
Yes.
And Commissioner Casello?
Yes.
The vote is four to zero.
Next.
17-023, an ordinance of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida amending land development regulations, Chapter 1, Article 2, definitions, amending, Chapter 1, Article 3, relationship to comprehensive plan, amending, Chapter 3, Article 1, overview, amending, Chapter 3, Article 3, zoning districts and overlays, amending, Chapter 3, Article 3, Section 1, overview, amending, Chapter 3, Article 3, Section 2, residential districts, amending, Chapter 3, Article 3, Section 5, mixed-use urban districts, amending, Chapter 3, Article 3, Section 8, overlay zones, amending, Chapter 3, Article 5, supplemental regulations, amending, Chapter 4, Article 3, exterior building and site design standards, amending, Chapter 4, Article 5, minimum off-street parking requirements, amending, Chapter 3, Article 4, Section 3D, zoning matrix, amending, Chapter 3, Article 4, Section 3D, zoning matrix notes, providing for conflict severability, codification, and an effective date.
Yes.
Mike Rumpf, your planning zoning director. I will offer you that same option. What pleases you yourselves as to what degree of presentation? This is the first of two public hearings as well. It is a public hearing. Needs to be treated as such. Depending upon what type of presentation you'd like, I can accommodate.
I mean, we've gone through this a couple times with the CRA, so...
Correct. Let me add, yes, this is implementing, one more deliverable to you in the process of update or implementing our redevelopment plan recommendations with respect to updating future land use categories and zoning districts definitions, and of course, adding another zoning district.
Commission, are you okay with the expedited? All right. So we will hear the full presentation next meeting. May I have a motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
May I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Katz?
Yes.
Commissioner McCray absent. Christina Romulus?
Aye.
Commissioner Casello?
Aye.
And Mayor Grant?
Yes.
The vote is four to zero.
Next, we are on Propose Ordinance Number 17-024. And Jim, you want to put them all together?
Yeah, with the consent of the applicant, can we read these ordinances together? We will vote separately, and people who wish to speak to any of them will be permitted to speak each as well.
Please do.
All right, so I'm going to run through them. It's item C, D, E, F, G. 17-024, an ordinance of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida amending ordinance 8938 by amending the future land use element of the comprehensive plan for the property known as the Villages at East Ocean Avenue North and described herein, owned by the Arthur B. Delmato, changing the land use designation from local retail commercial to mixed-use high, providing for conflict severability and an effective date. 17-025, an ordinance of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida amending ordinance 02013 to rezone a parcel of land described herein and commonly referred to as the Villages at East Ocean Avenue North from neighborhood commercial and community commercial to mixed-use core with maximum density of 80 units per acre, providing for conflict severability and an effective date. Ordinance 17-026, an ordinance of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida authorizing abandonment of a portion of the rights of way consisting of mostly unimproved streets and alleys between the, between northeast, southeast 3rd Street and the FEC Railroad from Boynton Beach Boulevard South to southeast, southeast 1st Avenue, more particularly described herein, subject to staff comments, authorizing the city manager to execute a disclaimer which shall be recorded with this ordinance in the public records of Palm Beach County, Florida, and providing an effective date. Ordinance 17-027, an ordinance of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida amending ordinance 8938 by amending the future land use element of the comprehensive plan for property commonly known as the Villages at East Ocean Avenue South and described herein, owned by Arthur B. Delmato, changing the land use designation from local retail commercial to mixed-use medium, providing for conflict severability and an effective date. Ordinance 17-028, an ordinance of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida amending ordinance 0213 to rezone a parcel of land described herein and commonly referred to as the Villages at East Ocean Avenue South from neighborhood commercial to mixed-use 2 with a maximum density of 40 dwelling units per acre, providing for conflict severability and an effective There are quasi-judicial hearings in part, not all of them. So anybody who wishes to speak or testify with respect to these, please raise your right hand. You swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give, and these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. Commissioners Bradley Miller of Miller Land Planning here, representing the applicant on these items. I'm going to jump on the same bandwagon. I've got three quick slides that really, I think, more for the public, and this is also following up from the CRA redevelopment plan of implementing this project. The area in green is our overall site, and this in particular, I really enjoyed as I was putting this slide together. It's like the blue squares of projects the downtown is shaping. You throw that on top of Casa Costa Marina Village, and, you know, it's really exciting to see. The area, our project area is being split between the north half, which is between Boynton and Ocean Avenue, and the south half, which is south of Ocean Avenue. Purpose of that is because there are different land use and different zoning districts. That's why you have so many items on your agenda here tonight. So we've been in this for about two years, and so we're anxious to see this coming. We weren't overly anxious to come tonight, but we're glad that it's here and working through. So for the north part, it's, we're changing this area. The land use is going from LRC to a mixed-use high category. It's following your redevelopment plan. And then the southern portion of it is going to a mixed-use medium category, again, following your plan. And the zoning that goes with those correspond as well to those land use categories. So with that, I'll leave it for any questions, or all I saw was staff as far as swearing in. So I'm here at your mercy, and go Patriots.
That's one way to get the vote.
Yeah. I just, you know, I know that we've had some concern regarding Ocean Avenue, so can we just get a quick look at what Ocean Avenue is going to look like?
Sure. We've, the, I'm also assuming that the site plan parts of these, I didn't go into the site plan parts of it because of the applications being tabled. I can, I can jump ahead here. Mayor Casello, you can talk to the mayor about this later.
You always put the best presentations on, Bradley.
I can't wait for it.
Thanks. Yeah, this, it'll be better on the second reading. This is the north half that I'm going through, so I'm skipping to Ocean Avenue. The area on the bottom slide there, the bottom portion is as, is if you were, that time I didn't even hit the button. Is if you are standing on the south side of Ocean looking north. The area in gray across the bottom is about 25 feet high, including the parapet. It wraps a plaza area. The area in the light green circle is, the only area is 35 feet until it steps back, which again is following the CRA redevelopment plan. So that's, that's the view of the north part of the project looking. This is a rendering of Boynton Beach Boulevard and 3rd Street looking southeast.
Keith, I have a question here. This is commercial, Boynton Beach Boulevard there where those automobiles are parked, that's commercial right in there?
It is.
Why are we putting commercial? Is this going to be another like Casa Costa or Los Fontanas? I don't see commercial working there like that.
There's, we do have commercial as part of the site plan. I could get into that, but since the site plan's tabled...
Okay. All right, that's something we're going to have to get into, I'd like to further discuss.
We'd be happy to go into more detail. I think it'd be better suited at the second reading with the site plan.
Very good.
Let me, let me grab my, sorry, I forgot my pointer. I do have one. And this, this, just to give a view, this is Ocean Avenue, boy, sensitive. This is Ocean Avenue looking northwest, the railroad tracks. So this is, this is the area, the gray area that's 20 feet high, 25 feet high. There's a plaza here, little 35-foot area with some residential units above. I remember I see Mayor Taylor here in the audience, and I remember him saying years ago about, "I can't wait to see some retail shops and some cafes on Ocean Avenue with retail uses above them and people hanging out on a terrace." And Mayor Taylor, it's coming. It's coming.
What's the size of that plaza?
In square footage?
Square footage.
I don't know if I, I don't think I have that square footage. It's...
That's something that could be expanded if need be?
Yeah, some of our...
Can we have that discussion?
We can do that again as I plan. The, you know, during our, at the beginning stages of our plan, that plaza area was actually larger than what it is today after going through some of the review process and some of the code requirements that staff asked us to do. But that's something else that we can entertain to expand that plaza.
I'd love to see that expanded, sure.
I think that's something that we would like to do as well. Okay, this is the south side. I think whoever's in the back is playing with me. I'm only hitting one button. And, and this, this view, we have a larger one here later on, is Ocean Avenue looking And again, this is site plan stuff, which I'll go through all of this. Andrew's home, which we're keeping as part of the project. And, and Mayor, this is the view of Ocean... And, and Mayor, this is the, the view of Ocean looking south, as if you're across the street. Actually, to see that whole thing, you'd have to be much farther back, but, but this is south. You've got 35 feet here on, on that end at three floors, and then it, again, it steps back. There's a little plaza area right in here, so this whole frontage across Ocean Avenue is three floors with the retail on the ground floor and residential units above. Here's, here's that rendering view. Again, this is Ocean Avenue looking to the southeast. This is 3rd Street. So this is retail space here in the corner, a little plaza area, more retail space on the ground floor, and then these are residential units above. These residential units are, I think they're my favorite. They have a wraparound terrace that, that are right on that corner. It'll be a premium come Pirate Fest days. So that's, it gives you, gives you the trailer of the second reading presentation.
Sounds good.
So...
All right. May I have a motion to approve?
No move.
Separate motion on each of those ordinances.
All right. So I'm going to say motion on Propose Ordinance Number 17-024.
No move.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner McCray absent. Commissioner Romulus?
Yes.
Commissioner Casello?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Katz. Vote is four to zero.
All right. Propose Ordinance Number 17-025. May I have a motion to approve?
Second.
May I have a roll call, please?
Romulus. Commissioner Casello?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Katz. Commissioner McCray is absent. The vote is four to zero.
Propose Ordinance Number 17-026.
Second.
May I have a roll call, please?
Casello?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Katz. Commissioner McCray absent, and Commissioner Romulus?
Aye.
The vote is four to zero.
May I have a motion to table the major site plan modification?
No move.
All those in favor state so by saying aye. Aye. It is tabled to September 19th, 2017. Propose Ordinance Number 17-027. May I have a motion to approve?
Second.
May I have a roll call, please?
Grant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Katz. Commissioner McCray absent. Commissioner Romulus?
Yes.
And Commissioner Casello?
Yes.
The vote is four to zero.
Propose Ordinance Number 17-028. Do I have a second?
Second.
May I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Katz. Commissioner McCray absent. Commissioner Romulus?
Yep.
Commissioner Casello?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
The vote is four to zero.
Thank you very much.
And there's, the last is the tabling of the south major site plan modification.
No move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It's tabled to September 19th, 2017. Any motion to adjourn?
Mr. Miller? Before we do, can you, oh, forget it. We'll get it on the second reading.
You're going to extend the meeting. Don't you want to see it? The full game?
All right.
Thank you, everyone. Be safe.
Stay safe, everyone.
Meeting is adjourned.